It is six o'clock and I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, November 7, 2024, Meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. This evening, I've asked Commissioner Clark if he would lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Tossen to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with us, please.
Everyone would bow their head. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for letting us live in one of the most beautiful places in the world, Lord. And, Lord, we just thank you for protecting us and putting a protective hedge around this community, keeping us safe, Lord. We lift up our first responders. We pray for their safety as they protect us each and every day. Lord, we just ask tonight, as we have this meeting, to conduct the people's business, Lord, that you put a attitude of gratitude, put an attitude of us just doing the people's work and following the law, this law of the land and the constitution that we have set before us. Lord, we ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Hand on heart, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may it be seen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer item number eight, approve the agreement and authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Box Modular for the purchase of a thirty-six by fifty-six modular office building for the sheriff's office utilizing a cooperative purchase exemption source well contract in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars with funding to be provided by the FY twenty-five Facilities Maintenance Fund and rescind the board's prayer action of approval on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to defer item number eight on our consent agenda and our published agenda for this evening. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Number eight is deleted, deferred.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business with the exception of anything a commissioner wishes to pull.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for general business. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for finance with the exception of anything a commissioner wishes to pull.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for finance. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, we'll get down to business. We have a public hearing this evening. Public hearings are to be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated for each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position. You should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number eighteen, CUP dash two-four-dash-five, one-twenty-one Mallory Street Conditional Use Permit. This is an item that we pushed from our last agenda to consider tonight. It is to consider a request for a conditional use permit for a combination of residential and commercial use on separate levels, which is a conditional use in the Village Mixed Use zoning district. Property is located at one-twenty-one Mallory Street, St. Simons Island, parcel zero-four-dash-zero-four-six-two-zero in Zone VMU and Island Preservation Design Overlay District. Charles Day is the agent for one-twenty-one MSLLC owner. And Ms. Lee, we'll give it to you.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. And as the chairman stated, this application was, continues, both the public hearing and application were continued to this meeting from your last VOC meeting. And as you may recall, there's two applications that are similar, the same applicant. They are basically separated by one other building between them, but they both are for second-floor residential uses. So this particular building at one-twenty-one Mallory Street, they are proposing to do three residential units on the second level. The eight parking spaces that are proposed at the rear of one-fifteen Mallory that you held the public hearing on at the last meeting, those parking spaces would be shared between one-fifteen and one-twenty-one Mallory. So this particular lot at one-twenty-one Mallory does not have any parking on site at all. They are completely dependent on parking at one-fifteen in order to meet their parking requirements for this property. So here's just a zoning map of this site. And so this is the building that this particular application applies to. The public hearing you held at your last meeting is for the former Blue Water Grill, which is down here. And so we've got King City Kitchen between these buildings, and then these have three businesses. These are the businesses that are currently in the first level, and they would be going up to the second level with the residential. So here's just some floor plans of what they're proposing. This is exterior elevation. And the Islands Planning Commission did approve the village preservation for these, both of these sites, actually. Was it this one? Was it this slide, Commissioner Booker?
No, it was the one before that. You're fine.
Okay. Here's just additional floor plan showing the proposals and additional exterior elevations. And the Islands Planning Commission held their public hearing on October fifteenth, and they voted five-one. One commissioner, Commissioner Brooks, was absent, and Commissioner Duncan was opposed, but they do recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this application. And these are your possible motions. And Charles Day is here representing the applicant.
Ms. Lee, what did you say about the parking?
So this-
There was no parking?
There is no parking on this site at all. They are, the only way they can meet their parking requirements is with a parking agreement with one-fifteen Mallory. Because one-fifteen Mallory is proposing to demolish the rear of the building and establish eight parking spaces.
And is this also the same block that has no drive-through? It's a dead-end alley?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Yeah, the alley behind this does dead-end basically at Blue Water Grill.
So it has no access out, but the one-way entrance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Have I answered any questions? And Mr. Day is here for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Well, before we open the public hearing, commissioners, any comments, questions? All right, this is a public hearing for CUP dash two-four-dash-five, one-twenty-one Mallory Street. Point of clarification, we heard the CUP for one-fifteen Mallory Street at our last commission meeting processed the information of that, so there will not be a public hearing for one-fifteen again tonight, but the information that we got two weeks ago would carry forward and be pertaining to one-twenty-one Mallory Street. This is the CUP for twenty-four-dash-five. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name for the record, please, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Christopher McDougall. I am the owner with my wife of King City Kitchen, which is two doors down from one-twenty-one on the left side of Zuzu's. There's a couple of reasons that I am opposition of this application for, we'll start off with access for these condos. We'll be on the backside. The stairwell, right at the base of that stairwell, there is three grease traps. There's a fifteen-hundred-gallon grease trap. There's also a three-hundred-gallon grease trap that is above ground pertaining right to the left of this stairwell. Also, you have this alley, like I spoke of with one-fifteen, is an entrance for delivery trucks in and out of that alley. We're putting pedestrians in the way of eighteen-wheelers backing up in and out of this alleyway. Don't think that's really a great thing to do, as well as putting residents above existing businesses with two restaurants right below it. Noise ordinance. There will be noise ordinance. As we had Georgia-Florence past weekend, we had a great turnout for the village. It was awesome. There was a lot of foot traffic. There was a lot of noise. There was a lot of noise outside of the noise ordinance. Don't know if there was any complaints of sort, but there will be noise in between the hours of the noise ordinance, and there will be ambient noise. Also, you have these units that are being put above, like I said, two or three businesses that don't open until nine o'clock and also close at six. So they're not going to have any noise below them, but the ones beside them are open extensive hours up until ten o'clock. Trash. I haven't seen anything that's proposing of where their trash receptacles were ADA compliance for this short-term rental. If they were to come oppose with this project with an application under the, excuse me, one second. Think it's application number fourteen, under a hotel, bedding breakfast, or any of those sorts, they would be opposed because of ADA compliance. There's not any handicap parking as they've had on this site. There's not even any access for handicap parking, nor handicap access. Also, I just don't think it's really a good situation down the road. One person's going to make it out of this, and that's the person that lives in Texas that is under the LLC, or, excuse me, the gentleman that lives in Sarasota, Florida, of one-fifteen. The transactional basis of this property is one-time. There's not a local person in business. Thank you for your time. You have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition to CUP dash two-four-dash-five? State your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Aiken. I am, and I consider myself, a lifelong resident of St. Simons, even though I spent a few years in Atlanta, but I am seven generations from St. Simons. My great-great-grandfather, Mallory Page King, had the foresight to create King City. This was done in the late eighteen hundreds. His vision was to offer lots and sell them in order to create a community. My great-grandfather, Franklin Aiken, who happened to marry into the family of the Kings, executed his father-in-law's vision, and that was to sell lots to merchants to make up what we now call the pier. By the way, I grew up, I never heard it called the village. Sorry, I'm just old school, but called the pier. Development in the south end of the island has been the focus of our family for generations. I'm not against development, but I am for smart development. When I was a little boy over sixty years ago, the pier was a very special place. It was where people came to shop. We bought our groceries there. We bought our seafood there when we didn't catch a cap. We went and purchased hardware from Strathers. Most importantly, all the little boys bought their flip-flops down there at the five-and-dime. It was the place for merchant business on the island. That was it. Kathy did a wonderful job three weeks ago, asking a very simple question. What do we want to see this end of the pier being, and how should that look for future development? Each one of you need to ask yourselves those questions. Mixed use has been commonplace in the pier with common sense driving what should and should not be in close proximity. Close proximity, mixed use. There are ordinances, and there have been already rules and regulations that have been passed by folks in your position that says, living and dwelling along with the other businesses don't mix. Having a VRVO condo acting more like hotel rooms next to a restaurant, serving dinner, is not what proper mixed use should be. I hope that each one of you will think about what the future of this end of the pier should be and not what these people are proposing today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Anyone else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Those that wish to speak in support of CUP dash two-four-dash-five, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is David Trem, and St. Simons Island, the pier, as more as we put residential close to that area, it's better for the business. If I have a restaurant, if I have a bait shop, or if I have a clothing store, it doesn't matter what it is. And look how nice it's, look. Three apartment above stores that you have on the first floor.
Could you speak into the mic a little closer?
Yeah, sure. So nothing is wrong to put more business on top of another business that generate more money. It's good for the business. I have Island Couture, which is in two-four Mallory. I have two-one, which is Island Republic. I have two-five, which is St. Simon Memories. And I have one-twenty-one, which we're talking, I'm renting the store over there, which is Island Vibes. Those old photo from Google are a little bit old one. So I have four store over there. I'm thinking only about how to generate more money. And I open from ten o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. And when it's in the season, May, June, July, we still open till twelve-eleven. We want to generate more money. And by us, by you gentlemen, putting or approving this project, we're putting more people into the island. The island is very limited. We need more people to support the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in support of CUP dash two-four-dash-five? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Charles Day, representative for the owners, looking to do the addition of the space. I would just like to speak on behalf of the owners of this project. While they do have an LLC that is headquartered in Texas, they have been in this area for twenty years, operating several businesses within the Pier Village as well. Sugar Shack is currently owned and operated by them here locally, as well as the golf cart rental that is heavily utilized. And they are a part of this community, invested in the community, voting members of this community as well. We are proposing nothing that is outside of the realm of a typical mixed-use district. Typically, a mixed-use district is a variety of businesses and residences. And it's just, given the circumstances of this application, it is required for residences to approve a conditional use. Also, restaurants follow under that same conditional use requirement. So we are, my clients are interested in following the letter of the law. They do feel like, as we've gone through this design process, we have gone through the ordinances extensively, checked all the boxes to make sure that we are in compliance with what the ordinances state. As far as noise and pedestrian traffic, anybody that is visiting a mixed-use district comes into the understanding of what that entails. Same as planning a vacation during Florida-Georgia weekend, you're going to plan ahead and look at what's going on in the community before you take a family of six in the midst of Georgia-Florida weekend. As far as the pedestrian traffic goes, this alleyway comes down King's Way and terminates into the Blue Water Grill facade. We're looking at an opportunity to clean up this alleyway, make it clean. We're not trying to do anything that isn't already present in the mixed-use district, such as residences and access. Strathers has eighteen-wheelers going behind their building every day with deliveries, and also a larger parking lot with pedestrian traffic crossing. So I don't think the six potential pedestrians crossing that path will be detrimental to any type of business. We have met the parking requirements according to the ordinances as they are stated. We have implemented the lowest-impact use for vehicular traffic in this area. If we were to take this building and turn it into a restaurant, it could be of the upwards of sixty required parking spaces. So we have done our best to minimize the impact in that regard. We believe in the system. We believe in respecting any decision made here today, and we do appreciate your time and your consideration in this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions that may arise. Thank you.
All right, if you'd stand by, please. Anyone else wishes to speak in favor of CUP dash two-four-dash-five? Come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Randall Perez. I work over at sixteen-hundred Frederica Road for the Golf Cart Company, Costa Coast Beach Rentals. I came today to take the time out of my day to come and show my support for this company. The owners have shown me nothing but goodness and kindness, and we always try to show the same to the community. My number-one focus whenever I'm at the store is to make sure that folks, when they rent golf carts, they comply to the law, and we stress that out sincerely to the folks. I make sure they don't leave the store without knowing the laws and the rules and regulations that go with the golf carts, and I'm sure the folks, when they do build these apartments, they will apply as well the same strict enforcing of following ordinances and applying to any concerns that you guys may have. Like I said, I came here today to take the time out of my day to show support for this company. I've worked for them for about four years, and like I said, our main focus is the community. We care about them. I've gotten nothing but good feedback from folks when they rent with us or they use our company, due to the fact that we show them sincere kindness, respect, and we make sure that they have a good time while following the law. And I'm sure the same will go for this project when it does come complete. Again, thank you for your time. I hope you guys have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of CUP dash two-four-dash-five? Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman? So we've had a chance to kind of smoke this thing over, so to speak. And as you know, I showed you at our last meeting the number of buildings that have second floors in the village that are used for a variety of usages, some condominiums, some offices. So having a second story on a building is not unusual to have, see that. It'll continue to grow that way in the village. As we know on St. Simons, every parameter that you can expand or build- As we know on St. Simon's, every parameter that you can expand or build, people will come to do that. So, what we want it done is in a tasteful way, in a good way, in a way that makes sense and fits. And what I propose on this particular concept is, first of all, that alleyway is not like the alleyway behind Struthers, it's wider. This alleyway is small, tight, and it is used for service trucks in and out. It's really not a place for pedestrians to be walking because of the width of that alley. So, in this plan, they have the exit for these buildings on the back. But if you go through the village, every single second-floor offices or condominiums has a stairway down that fronts to Magnolia, I mean, to Mallory Street. So, I think one of the things that, if this applicant's willing to do, I would suggest that we consider mandating that the entrance for those units comes down to Mallory Street, which means he has to cut some square footage off the back and he has to work it with his stores that he owns below to be able to provide that access down. But every two-story building in the village, none of them go out the back, they all front down to Mallory. So, it's consistent with what's going on. He's required, of course, to get the parking spaces in. It's just additional parking, because you know in the village, they park everywhere, anywhere they can and walk around. So, having those spaces are needed in the second part of his application. So, that's what I would propose, that the project be approved except access is limited to off of Mallory Street. I just throw that out as a consideration.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have a comment? All right. We're at the point of entertaining the motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that the address of 121 Mallory Street Conditional Use Permit be granted with the exception that access will be provided only to the second story from Mallory Street side of the property.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the motion. Do I hear a second? All right. Motion fails from lack of a second. Do I hear another motion? All right.
I make a motion that we deny the proposed conditional use permit.
Have a motion from Commissioner Tosson to deny the conditional use permit.
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Fosk. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor of denying CUP-24-5, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, that's five to two, and it is denied. All right, so that brings us to item number 19, which is CUP-24-6, which is 115 Mallory Street Conditional Use Permit that we had the public hearing on at our last meeting. Consider a request for a conditional use permit for a combination of residential and commercial use on separate levels, which is a conditional use in the mixed, Village Mixed Use zoning district. Property is located at 115 Mallory Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel 04-04621, and zone VMU and Island Preservation Design Overlay District in Charles Day against the agent. And Ms. Leaf, you want to give us a brief refresher?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, sir. So, this application, the public hearing was held, this was deferred from the October 17th meeting to tonight. And just a refresher, this building at 115 Mallory is the former Blue Water Grill. They do have an existing second story, and this is where the parking would be located. So, they are showing or proposing one residential unit on the second level. They would demolish the rear of the building, which is not a historic part, the building was added much later. And so, after they demolished the rear of the building, they would install eight parking spaces. The only access to the parking spaces is off of Floyd Street, because as we discussed with the last application, this is a dead end at the alley. And just here's the aerial of the site. So, this is Mallory right here. So, it's this back portion you can see here that would be demolished for the parking. And you can see it in the site plan, this rear portion is gone, and they come into these parking spaces that are angled right off of Floyd. And the planning commission did have, did recommend approval of this application. And here are your possible motions. Mr. Day is here for this application as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. All right, Commissioners, we have, we have heard the public hearing on this, so is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is there a picture of the back of the building?
No, no, sir. I do not have a picture of the back of the building in this presentation. I'm sorry about that.
All right. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, my proposal for the last one to be creative and create investment in there didn't fly, but want to point out some things here. If you go back to the floor plan there.
This one or this?
Yeah, that's it. Thanks. So, I would approve the recommendation, but a couple of things on there is I would not allow, again, the access to the alley. They can go out the back and then out on Floyd Street, but there will be no walking down that alley because it is a service alley. I asked Stephanie to give us the number, you know, in every building, there's a limitation of persons for a particular business, to look up what the number was. If you turn this down, then you have this two-story building still sitting empty, nothing happened with it, it's been a dark spot on the end of the village. Did you find out what the capacity was before, the licensed capacity?
Yes, sir. So, the Department of Public Health was able to find an older application from like 2009 that did show a maximum occupancy of 200 people in this building.
I don't really want that to be recreated. I realize that this application is on top of the building, but it does mean that he has to purchase it, it does mean that the structure underneath it has to be made good. So, again, I would offer a motion that we approve the application, but the access to the alley would not be allowed.
Could you repeat that motion again?
Yeah. That we approve the conditional use permit, but that the access in the rear of the building shown to the alley would not be allowed.
Are you saying, as you did a while ago, he would have to have access, exit to Mallory Street? Is that what?
No, on that, because it's condo, they go out the back, the parking's in the back, and they just go out Floyd Street and around to walk, which is a short, short spin.
All right. All right, again...
Or, which I know they've done, or that should, they can talk to a condo group that's east on the ocean there to have access through that parking lot there if they want. Because all he's applying for is the conditional use upstairs.
And...
To build the condo upstairs.
Commissioner Fendig, should they come back to us with that type of proposal so we can actually see it before?
Well, I mean, that's what they, that's what they have. I mean, you've got parking there. The only thing of issue in the back is the gate.
But we're also seeing from this diagram here that there's a fence and a gate where that access is denied by automobile. It's blocked. And you're proposing that they actually have an access to go through that other alleyway?
Just, just as it's presented, they're creating their own parking spot. That gate would not be accessible for people to go through and out. Because it's a service alley. They just walk right there on Floyd Street and around. It's not a big deal. Or they make a deal with the condo group to use their parking and walk, or access to get out the gate. Because we're talking about upstairs is what we're talking about.
So, you're actually saying no, no vehicles through that, just pedestrians?
Through the alley.
Not even pedestrian?
Not pedestrian in the service alley.
I don't see how that changes much. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, it does if people are walking through the service way there in the back.
All right, we, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Fendig to recommend approval of the CUP with the exception that the alleyway would be blocked off for use by pedestrian. Do I have a second? All right, that fails for lack of a second. Do I hear another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny CUP-24-6. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fosk, a second by Commissioner Tosson to deny CUP-24-6. Any other discussion? All in favor of denial, please raise your right hand. Those against that, raise your right hand. It's five to two. It is denied. All right, item number 20, FP-24-7, Autumn Wood Phase IV Subdivision, is a property that I own, so I will recuse myself at this time. And Mr. Vice Chairman, I pass the gallows to you.
Thank you, sir. FP-24-7, Autumn Wood Phase IV Subdivision Final Plat. Consider a final plat approval for the subdivision of approximately 14-acre tract into 35 lots and one tract to be named Autumn Woods Phase IV Subdivision. Property is located at Zero Elizabeth Drive, parcel number 03-18602, and zone Plan Development District. Philip Jackson, Jackson Surveying Incorporated, agent for the applicant Wayne Neal Regency Land Group LLC owner.
Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So, this is a final plat for Phase IV of Autumn Wood, and there are 35 lots proposed with one tract. They are also dedicating the roads to the county, so there's also a deed from, from the owner to, to the county to dedicate those right-ofways, this public right-of-way. There's also an easement for utilities, access, and drainage, that's also in the packet as well. Those documents would be recorded along with the final plat, or right after the final plat is recorded if it is approved. And this plat is in compliance. And here's a copy of the plat. And these are your possible motions. I'm happy to answer any questions. And our county engineer is also here this evening if you have any questions of him. Thank you.
This is not a public hearing, so it's just up to us. All right, Commissioners, what do you think? Stephanie, everything is in order on this?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Yeah. I move that we approve FP-24-7 as stated. Second.
Okay, we have a motion properly approved and seconded. All in favor, show your right hand. Anybody against? Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, should the motion be fully in the record with some additional?
Commissioner, I think it's fine as presented, as stated, so. And then also, for the record, there's one abstention. Right?
Thank you. Yeah. Do we have need for executive session, Mr. Attorney?
We do, Commissioners. We have matters of potential litigation as well as property matters to discuss, please.
I think Commissioner Fendig wanted to mention the pickup of debris.
Yes, I asked Mr. Fallon to kind of give us, the community, an update on the debris pickup. I'm sure the other commissioners, like me, have been pounded with calls about, "When is somebody coming by to get my stuff?" And where are they at? And what's going on? And just thought it'd be good to hear from the manager's point of view what's going on.
All right, Commissioners, so I appreciate everybody's patience on this. I did ask Danny Smith, our Public Works Director, he's not present here tonight, but he did send me a message. And so, just a couple of details on the status of where we are. Series, which is our, the contractor that we have, is, they've actually hauled about 45,000 cubic yards so far, and that was our original estimate. They're still working on their first pass. They're working seven days a week, 10 trucks working daily countywide. He anticipates that we're probably closer to the 55,000 cubic yards by the time everything is said and done. And the contractor wants this to be done as soon as possible as well. But keep in mind that that contractor has worked in some of the other counties as well. And there's some of the counties here in the southeast where that total debris time for pickup's going to be 10 months or more. So, for us, we're still on pace to have it both passes, so again, there's going to be a second pass. Both passes done by early December, so it'll be about two months for us from the time of the storm to get it, get it all collected. And that includes all of the, the private neighborhoods as well.
You're saying that they'll be with us till the end of the year?
No, beginning of December, sir. We should have our, we should have everything collected, probably right now, we're hoping December, early December sometime.
Thank you.
And in fact, based on, based on some of your requests too, we've reached out to them and they plan on trying to add some additional trucks next week.
So, is there, is there a time estimate for first pass, or is it just...
Yeah, they're, they're still doing. I think they just started some of the private neighborhoods this, this week for the, for the first pass. And so, once they get that done, again, you know, everybody's got to keep in mind, it's the big stuff. So, I think we put out plenty of messages on what actually will be taken. It's not going to be grass or leaves or that type of stuff. But there is, and I've noticed it as well around the county, there's still plenty of areas that have some big trees that are, and chunks of trees that are down. So, they should be finishing up hopefully with the first pass here in the next week or two, but then that second pass will go a lot quicker.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Fallon, I think our estimate was we would collect somewhere around 40,000 tons of debris. We are near there already and still a lot to collect. So, the project is bigger, the demand is great, and I get calls as well, and I know that the, you know, it's been a couple of months, and, and we're typically very accustomed to rapid and, and positive response. We're getting that still, but there's still a lot to, to be done. But I would also like to state for the record that we're all very fortunate here in Glen County. We all have our homes to go home to. We still have electricity in our homes. We didn't lose our livelihood. There's been no loss of life. Our neighbors just up the road in the state of Georgia can't say that. The people in North Carolina, we know, can't say that. So, while we would like to have it all done and have our, you know, the debris out of here, we deserve to, to give consideration to, to our neighbors up the road. They're having to have their pickup, their debris picked up as well. The amount of resources that are available throughout the state to be able to do this collection is limited. They're sitting on an everyday job for everyday people all around the state. So, there's a lot to do there. And I, I would ask personally for the patience of the community and, and to take a moment to reflect just how fortunate we were, even, even in all that we went through. And they will, they will get there. Series is, is a good company, very reputable, they're working very hard, but they will get to you. And, and that has been my response to people that have asked me, and, and I would just ask our community to show, show patience in, in getting this done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have need for executive session, but I haven't gotten the reason yet.
Potential litigation and property matters.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski to go into executive session for a possible litigation in property matters. And a second by Commissioner Fendig. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand in recess.
Executive session. Tell them we gonna go.
I was just kidding.
I don't know, let's go. Quincy? Motion to come out of recess. Executive session. All right, we got a motion by me, then. Second by Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Clark. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any business to come before the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from October 17th, 2024. Executive session.
Second.
That was motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve the minutes of a previous executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendations of the county attorney regarding potential litigation and property acquisition, and the Director of Engineering Services regarding property acquisition.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve the recommendations of the county attorney based on property acquisition and...
Possible litigation, is that right? Yeah. No pro... Potential litigation and property acquisition and Director of Engineering Services regarding property acquisition.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the agreement of the purchase and sale between Glen County, Georgia, and William Randall Bailey for the acquisition of approximately .72 acres of property located at 1108 Old Jessup Road, Brunswick, parcel number 03-03818, for a purchase price of $75,000, with funding provided from the Capital Projects FY25 fund.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve the purchase of property at the corner of Canal and Old Jessup. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofuski, a second by Commissioner Clark to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, we stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.